Good evening. Welcome to the February 5th, 2020 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We will call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present tonight. Our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the December 18th, 2019, and the January 8th, 2020 Planning Commission meetings. Were there any additions or corrections to those minutes? And if not, we're going to ask for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have one item of old business tonight. This will be the annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 190 linear feet, or 0.22 acres, of a nail drive right-of-way. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Our first item tonight is an item that we conducted a public hearing on, on January the 8th. We requested that the Planning Commission defer action on the annexation of this right-of-way because the Rutherford County Road Board voted to defer action on granting its consent to annex this right-of-way. The Road Board took the request for consent back up at its meeting this Monday, on February 3rd, and voted to consent to its annexation. So now, we now have the green light to proceed. And just as a reminder, this is just purely for right-of-way. It's 190 linear foot stretch of a nail drive right-of-way, just south of its intersection with Joby Jackson Parkway. We annexed the property at the southwest corner of that intersection last year, or the year before. We've met several times with the new owner of that property. Not sure exactly the development plan that he's going to be submitting. He's thought about several different development plans for that property, but regardless of the development plan, we anticipate one or more driveway connections onto a nail drive. And because it would be a city development connecting to this road, it just makes more sense, in our opinion, to have it all in one jurisdiction, rather than in multiple jurisdictions. And so we have initiated the annexation petition and plan of services. And as I mentioned, the county consented to the annexation of this right-of-way, and staff would recommend approval. Staff would recommend that you vote to recommend approval of this annexation to the City Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And as I mentioned, we've already conducted the public hearing, and the public hearing's been closed, so there's no need to conduct another public hearing on this matter tonight.
Okay. Any questions from the Planning Commission, from Mr. Blomley?
There are none. I'll make a motion we approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to new business. We have three items tonight. The first one is an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 1.6 acres, located at 3505 Florence Road, Wiseman Investments applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones, Plan Commission. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider a 1.6 acre portion of property that's located west of Florence Road. The property currently has one single-family house that's addressed at 3505 Florence Road. And you can see the shape of the property is a small square within it, and that shows the Miles Cemetery, which is currently in city limits already. So you can, on the map that you have before you, you can see the gray area is existing city limits. The area that's not shaded gray is unincorporated area. So this property is surrounded by the Murfreesboro city limits. We've received a petition for annexation from the property owners, and they've requested that to be annexed and rezoned. The subject of this public hearing will be to consider the annexation of the property. I have provided you a plan of services and feasibility study that outlines the services the city can provide for this property. Essentially, because it already does have a single-family home, most services are already available to the property, and the additional city services can be extended by the developer. So if they wanted city sewer, we have it available. It would just be the responsibility of them to extend sewer to the property. Solid waste collection would be able to happen pretty immediately as well. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing on the matter of the annexation study and the annexation petition. After your public hearing, you should recommend, make a recommendation forward to City Council. This public hearing, as I mentioned, is for the annexation. Right after the close of this public hearing, we'll have a second public hearing to consider the zoning change application. So at this time, you should conduct a public hearing on the annexation.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Green before we open the public hearing? All right. For our public hearings tonight, for any of you that would like to come forward and speak on any of these items, you'll come forward to the podium, state your name and address. You will have three minutes to make your comments to the Planning Commission, and please do make all your comments to the Planning Commission and not to other members of the audience or the developers. And so we will begin by opening this public hearing on the annexation plan of services and annexation petition for 3505 Florence Road. And if anyone would like to come forward and speak, please do so now. Nobody here for this public hearing. Then we will close that public hearing, and we will ask for questions or comments from the Planning Commission.
Is this, and this may not be the time to ask it, but I'll ask it. Is this the one we were talking about, the house being rented? So where are we on that?
Yes, sir. You can, if you don't want to make a motion, I think you can delay your motion till after the zoning. Or if you make, if you do recommend the annexation and not the zoning, they have the option of not moving forward with just the annexation. But this is that property.
Okay.
And I was not here when we had the original discussion. I missed our last meeting, so I did, you know, inquire and get some information about this. So I do think that in this, since we have the two items that go together here, it would make sense for us, if the rest of the Commission agrees, to just defer this vote until after. We've also had this zoning application, public hearing and discussion, and then we can vote on both the annexation and the zoning request after the two public hearings, if that makes sense to both of you all. And we would still have two separate motions on the annexation and the zoning, but we will just have both votes after we've had the chance to hear about the zoning application, because I do think there were some items that needed to be tended to regarding the zoning application.
Is the annexation contingent to the rezoning, or is it an option to the, obviously, if they're going to change the zoning, they're going to accept the annexation, but is there any scenario that they're going to accept the annexation and not the zoning?
If the zoning's not approved, but the annexation moves forward, the property would come to the city's zoned RS-15, that's single-family residential district, and I would look to the representative, Mr. Clyde Roundtree, and ask him if they would be interested in moving forward with the annexation with the RS-15 zone. Would you mind coming to the lectern, introducing yourself, and speak on behalf of your applicants?
Good evening. Chairman Jones, Commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Hulston Steel Engineering. Thank you, Margaret Ann, for your initial presentation. And the answer is, I'm not sure. As far as, I represent Mr. Hassan, as far as the investment group, and his concern is he definitely wants it go commercial. The stipulation with having to raise the building was something he's really wrestling through. So I was planning on deferring the zoning component of this, you know, to kind of get that honed in. Working with planning staff, we kind of went through three scenarios, commercial town homes and single-family detached lots. And so I think if we come back, we're probably going to come back with the RS-6, you know, trying to see if we can go with a little bit of higher-density, single-family residential. He does want to eventually get to where it's a commercial lot, and I didn't know if there's another mechanism that we'd have in the zoning process as far as a deed restriction on the building, or even go into a plan development where we could stipulate that the building would be taken down upon the change of use. So we're kind of working through that. So the answer is, is I'm not sure that he would be motivated right now to go towards the annexation, knowing full well we're probably going to defer the zoning case, but that's where we stand right now.
So I'll make a motion to defer the annexation plan of services?
I think that's most appropriate.
And do you want us to defer it altogether, or defer it just our vote until after the zoning application?
I would say defer it till after zoning, because if there's anyone here to speak publicly about the zoning, we'd love to hear their concerns, so we can, that may help shape our direction. But the client's more than willing to defer. He's, again, he would like it to be commercial, but the stipulations he's trying to work through and his partners out of the country right now, so that's what we're working through.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. We're just going to defer our vote until after the next public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. I don't see Mr. Ives getting upset with us over there, so, okay. We will move on then to item B, which is the zoning application for this property, approximately 1.6 acres, located at 3505 Florence Road, to be zoned CF, Commercial Fringe, simultaneous with annexation. Wiseman Investments is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you. This next public hearing is for you to consider a zoning change application that's been submitted to us for the property you just considered for annexation. The property is that 1.6 acre parcel located west of Florence Road with the cemetery notch inside it. The property, as I mentioned, does have a single-family house located on it, and this investment company that's made the application owns the property, and they're currently using it as rental property for a single-family house rental property. And the property to the north is zoned CF, and that's Fringe Commercial District. Property to the west and south is zoned RS-6, and that's a small lot, single-family subdivision. Just across the street are some RS-12, single-family residential lots, which are 12,000 square-foot lots, and some county 15,000 square-foot lots. I did include a chart in your staff materials that shows the uses that would be permitted in the CF Zone District. And the CF Zone is what's been requested by the applicant, and that's Commercial Fringe District. The CF District is intended to permit the development and maintenance of commercial uses along highways and major arterial streets, which tend not to be in a nuisance to the immediate surrounding residential. And because this property would be, in the future, surrounded by residential, we felt that that was a better way forward than Commercial Highway District. When the Planning Commission considered this application to schedule it for a public hearing at our last meeting, we discussed at length the existing situation, that it is a single-family house being used as rental property. The applicants have not submitted, and Mr. Roundtree has not expressed any imminent plans for redevelopment of the property or for commercial development of the property, and they have no desire to discontinue the use of it as a residential rental property. Planning Commission staff both were concerned with the potential desire to just rehab the existing single-family home into a commercial use, although the CF District didn't, with our discussions, we didn't have any outstanding or big concerns with it. We were concerned with the possible rehab of a residential house into commercial use. And at that time, Mr. Roundtree couldn't speak to the intentions of the applicant, but he's here tonight, and he'll be able to give you that additional information, which I think is, they still want to use it for residential purposes. The, it was, at that time, it was scheduled for a public hearing, because their zoning ordinance does currently require that we hold a public hearing within so many days, and so we went ahead and moved forward with that. The plan is not consistent with our future land use map. It is currently recommended to develop as a high-density residential use. I did take an opportunity to look at the surrounding undeveloped property, that is the Waldron Farm and part of the Waldron property, and just kind of estimate how much property is there. We had initially consulted with Mr. Roundtree. They wanted to put townhomes here or small lots, and our concern was that currently there is 43 acres zoned for townhomes, RSA type 2, and 65 acres zoned RS-6, and those have the mass to be able to support an HOA that can manage the spaces there. But with this small lot, if it's not integrated into the larger development, we didn't think it was a good option to have a high, small lot, high-density on this 1.6 acres. And so we thought that Commercial Fringe would be maybe a better use, because it is adjacent to Commercial Fringe uses. Our concern still remains that if they want to use it for residential purposes, it may be, it's premature. So just breaking down what is currently out there, the Waldron Farm has approximately 65 acres zoned for small light, RS-6, 43 acres for townhomes, that's the RSA type 2, 74 acres zoned Commercial Fringe District, and 25 acres zoned Highway Commercial District. And that CH Zone is closer to the interstate, where we'll see the new road extension, so you don't see it right on the map in front of you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, you may want Mr. Roundtree just to confirm the desires of the applicants, because it's been my, just to make sure that you understand their intent, what they're actually requesting.
Any questions, or would you all like to hear from Mr. Roundtree before the public hearing?
I want to have the public hearing first.
We will go ahead and conduct the public hearing, unless you have anything, okay. We'll conduct the public hearing. So at this time, we will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this item.
My name is Rachel Powell, and I'm a concerned citizen of Murfreesboro, and I didn't know if it's possible to get more details for this lot, for this, what the intentions are for this piece of land. We live right across the street.
And Ms. Powell, if you don't mind, would you just state your address, please?
Yes, it's 3522 Crepe Circle.
Thank you.
We love our peaceful, quiet neighborhood and want to keep Murfreesboro green. Everywhere you look, trees are being bulldozed and land is being developed. I speak on behalf of my fellow neighbors when I say we don't. I don't know what this land, what they're proposing, it sounds like townhomes, but it seems like the piece of property, it was up for auction, and so I feel like rules and regulations should be in place to keep developers from purchasing a residential home at auction just to develop what they want. Developers can outbid the average citizen and aspiring homeowners. I implore all parties involved to please consider keeping this land a residential space. I don't, again, I don't know all the details of this piece of property, but as a resident, we are concerned about the development in this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Anyone else? If there's no one else, we will close the public hearing, and like questions from the Planning Commission? Comments?
Mr. Roundtree, would you like to give us some more explanation of what it is that you're wanting to do? I mean, because, I mean, we're still, you're saying you don't know what the guy's going to do with it. We don't know what the guy's going to do with it. Neighbors don't know what the guy's going to do with it. In order for us to approve something, I think we need to have some idea what we're approving.
Yeah, I think that what I'm going to go back to the client and talk about, his biggest concern was to, we want to make sure that it has viability as a commercial lot. Originally, that was a question, whether that would be something that could be done on that lot. Based on some of the adjacent relationships, we feel like the Commercial Fringe, as Margaret Ann says, that's an adjacent relationship. So I think eventually, he's going to want to head in that direction. The question is his timing. He was hoping, again, that he could zone a commercial, keep the rental available until it was time to make it a commercial lot, and then tear down the building and make it a commercial building. But I think the concern is, as has already been modeled, you know, in various areas where these houses become these insurance agencies, and then they stay that way forever. So I expressed that to him. They say that is the concern from the city's standpoint, that they don't want it to become this patch-meal, oh, is that a house or a business kind of look? So that's been communicated fully. I think the townhomes was what we originally came to the table with, and based on some of the capacity issues that we're experiencing, and just the overall density, and Margaret Ann's concern, that there's that much quantity of townhomes around it. So he sees that as being off the table. Like I said, the only thing is, where he's wrestling is just go ahead and develop it as RS-6, and go ahead and put, you know, smaller density homes, which are adjacent to that. The HOA is kind of new, as far as, you know, one of the capacity for seven homes, you know, how they would tie in. I know we looked into whether the street would connect and how that would work out with a sub-street. So I'm going to go back and report. I'd like to defer, and I think I can come back next month with more definitive information. If the neighbors were against commercial altogether, I wanted to be able to communicate that with him. I think it's the logical thing for him to do, but it's really a matter of timing for him, because it is an investment property, it does have a renter in. The only question I had was, is there any other mechanism that's available to us to protect the city from, you know, the concern of a home becoming a business over time? And I didn't know if there was any sort of mechanism, like the David question, where we could do a plan development that has stipulations upon the transfer of use, that the building would be torn down, and then all the commitments will be made within the plan development to say, it's going to be this building, it's going to look like this, so the neighbors would know kind of what's coming. But he could still, he could still keep it in place. So he's really trying to project what he's going to do in the future, is really where he's at. It'd be a perfect place for a childcare center, it'd be a perfect place for a lot of types of uses like that. So that's where we're at. Up to my knowledge right now, there's no other mechanism we have that allows that house to stay on property and it still be rezoned.
There is the option to request a plan development zoning, but I've heard loud and clear from council that they don't want plan developments that are just kind of speculative and put out there with no intent to build it. So my concern with requesting a plan development, if they're still, the plans for this property are still not mature, it would be presenting something to City Council when it's not quite ready. But a plan development would be an approach that we routinely use to guarantee a type of development.
And with that, Margaret Ann, we've done a concept plan that shows kind of the capacity of the land, the parking capacity, the building size, so we would kind of know, outside of the use, you know, we wouldn't know who's going to use that building, but I think we can project pretty clearly on what the land's going to dictate, if that was a means available. Because I, again, I appreciate your concern, saying, you know, we don't know what it's going to be, so why go there from a planning standpoint? But I think we can know physically what's going to happen on the property if he goes commercial. So that's the big stipulation he's at. He was going to commercial tomorrow, if he knew that he didn't have to tear the building down, you know, the next day. And I'm under the impression that once it's zoned that way, that building has to go. So that's where we're kind of, that's where we're at. But if there was a mechanism, we thought, and I can say, hey, we have a tool that we can use that affords some assurances to the city, but allows you to keep your building as a rental property until that time comes where you go, when you want to do something on this property, it's going to look like this, you know, that would be something I'd love to tell him, but I'm not sure if that's really available. I mean, Margaret Ann says it's available to us, but whether that's something you all would look very really on as a council.
I would like to clarify something. It can be zoned Commercial Fringe, but if it's zoned Commercial Fringe, there's the situation that Ms. Green referenced with it being retrofitted to be a commercial use. And then, but also, if it remains a residential use, it's, we are creating a nonconformity. It would be allowed to continue as a nonconformity, and really, unless it was damaged or destroyed beyond a certain amount, or if it was discontinued for a certain period of time, then it would be forced to comply. But if it didn't meet those thresholds, that single-family residence could go on in perpetuity.
And therein lies my concern, is the continued use of the house for perpetuity for a residential use, or even if it were zoned Commercial Fringe, the potential of somebody going in with a, you know, a massage parlor or something like that, or a dentist's office would be Commercial Fringe. There's things that could go in there that would be probably something the neighbors wouldn't agree, that would be a good development in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It's also the potential that if this property, which is a much larger property next to it, which is Commercial Fringe, would wind up with a house sitting next door to a true development that is a Commercial Fringe development.
Right.
So it would create a large area of inconsistency. And so I just, I think the best thing for us to do right now, Clyde, would either be to defer it, or to make a motion to vote it down, and I don't want the guy to not be able to bring it back. So I would say, with that information that we've conveyed to you, that deferral may be the best option for you.
Yeah, and I told him that would be more than likely the course of action we're going to take, but I just wanted to make sure, understood clearly, that I could communicate to him that, because, Matthew, just to follow up on your point as far as a nonconforming use, and if it were a plan that, well, again, it's a little bit out of my wheelhouse, and we may have to just meet on this, because I'm not sure if we can solve it right now. But from my understanding, if it goes plan development, and those commitments are made, use commitments, size commitments, aesthetic commitments, all the capacity on that piece of property are defined, and it still stays a single-family residence until the change of use, in a sense, is that a mechanism that's available to us?
Mr. Roundtree, I think that I had mentioned, council has cautioned us against that with plan developments, if you're not ready to move forward. And it sounds to me like this is a year's thing that they want to
It might be.
...use it for residential. Council has asked us, after another application, I think, that you worked on, to not bring plan developments that are speculative, although, so I mentioned plan development as an option for guaranteeing the development type, and it is, but also, I heard from City Council that they didn't want those speculative, let me put a plan development here, just to get the zoning in place, even though I don't have plans to redevelop it.
Just for clarity, though, as far as speculative, we're talking about use or look or feel? Because that's, the one I ran into is
It would be use.
It'd be use.
It would, I think, be all of those.
And look and feel.
What's that? All those things? Okay.
Including use.
Okay.
I do think the whole idea behind the plan development is it is a plan. You have a plan, and this is what you want to do, and I don't think you're quite there yet.
Right.
Clyde, I think from the planning department, as well as the Planning Commission, it's our responsibility to plan the city of Murfreesboro, not to issue zoning for speculative investment properties. And I think that is clearly what this would fall into right now. If you're planning on keeping it residential with the intentions of zoning, it's something that it's not, that is a nonconforming use, and you are basically speculating on that land so that somebody can make money off that property, and that's not what we're up there for. That's not our responsibility to make money for people. Our responsibility is to plan.
Right.
So.
Well, if we can defer it for the night, and then I'll go back to him and say, we can either come back with a CF zoning, where the building would be raised, or we come back with a residential zoning, that would be more compatible with the adjacent uses.
Move for deferral. I want to make one comment before we vote. Because there is so much ambiguity, usually when we defer it, we don't have another public hearing, but I would like to make as part of this deferral motion that we have a public hearing, so that the folk, I mean, I know there's not, the folks that are here, that they know what the, what are we applying for in the end?
Okay.
So, and I'll second Eddie's motion.
Okay, and that deferral is amended to include the comments that Ken made.
I think we need to specify, we have two items out on the table that need to be voted on, whether the
We need a motion on the annexation plan of services and annexation petition, first.
We've already deferred that one.
We deferred the vote until after the second public hearing. Now we're going to vote on both of these items, so the annexation plan of services and annexation petition. We're going to vote first.
Move for deferral to a different date for the annexation and plan of services.
Have a motion? What about a second? Motion in a second? All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then we Okay, and then we would also like a motion now on the zoning application.
Move for deferral on the zoning application with the understanding that there will be an additional public hearing should the item be brought back before us. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And if I can ask one question, just for my own personal knowledge. If someone, if we approve a planned development, that is just a zoning for that property, and it is approved on that property forever, until somebody comes along and does something different, even if they don't act on that plan in a certain time period, it's still, that is the zoning on that property. It's not like some of the plaits and things that we approve, and after 18 months, if they haven't done anything, then they have to come back again, or?
Yes, ma'am, the way planned developments work is that they are the actual zoning for the property, and they remain on that property until a legislative action is taken to change that, and so that would be something, an action taken by city council. There is a provision in the zoning ordinance that if they haven't done anything, it can revert back to its previous zone category. In my 15 years, we haven't done that yet, but you do have that as an option, but it is a legislative action, so it will require deliberate action with a recommendation from planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, we will move on to our next public hearing, which is a zoning application for approximately 1.11 acres located along South Academy Street, north of East State Street, to be rezoned from C H and C C O to P U D, Greenhouse Ministries, P U D, and C C O, Greenhouse Ministries is the applicant. Ms. Kerr?
Thank you, Chair Jones. The property is located at 315 and 319 South Academy Street, and is also located along the east side of South Academy Street, to the south of East Sevier Street, and to the north of East State Street. It's approximately 1.11 acres. Both parcels are currently undeveloped, are within the city limits, and are zoned commercial highway district, within the C C O district. The applicant wishes to rezone the property to planned unit development, planned unit district, and the proposed P U D would consist of a 26,000 square foot mixed-use building for Greenhouse Ministries. The zoning request will not remove the property from the C C O. The development is requesting to have direct access onto South Academy Street and a secondary point of access on East Sevier Street. The development would include one two-story building consisting of multifamily dwellings, offices, meeting areas, classrooms, a small medical room, and flex space. The first floor will include non-residential facilities, and the second floor will be one-bedroom apartment units and a community laundry area. Primary exterior materials would include stone, brick, and cementa siding. The minimum building setbacks for the development would be five foot on the front facing South Academy Street, 35 foot on the northern front facing East Sevier Street, 10 feet on the south side, and 20 feet on the rear. Adventures would include an outdoor seating area on the east side of the building, and the program book has been revised to address planning commission's previous concerns about safety and security. Surrounding properties to the north are zoned commercial highway, and were originally developed with single-family residential dwellings and have been converted to commercial uses. The two single-family structures directly to the north on East Sevier Street are vacant. The west of the property directly across South Academy Street is zoned commercial highway, and is developed with an additional parking for the city center development, and a one-story building occupied by Greenhouse Ministries. Property to the east is the old city cemetery and is zoned commercial highway. Properties to the south are zoned commercial highway and consist of an undeveloped lot on the corner of South Academy Street and East State Street, a parking lot for Scales and Sons Funeral Home, and another commercially zoned parcel developed with an existing residential dwelling unit. The future land use map of the Murphysboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan recommends that the downtown mixed-use central business district is the most appropriate land use character for this property. Compatible existing zoning districts are the central business district, mixed-use districts, and planned unit development districts. Development types of the downtown mixed-use central business district land use character include an active mix in concentration of uses and public gathering event spaces in a main street setting. Recommended allowable uses include multifamily residential uses, entertainment, restaurants, department stores, and other retail, general, and professional offices, as well as hotels. Recommended allowable uses include multifamily residential uses. I mean, the land use is also characterized by streets and other public spaces framed by buildings with zero minimal front setbacks, creating architectural enclosure. It is staff's opinion that the proposed zoning request is consistent with the future land use map. A copy of the pattern book has been included in your agenda materials, and Mr. Rob Mulchan with S E C is here to make a presentation regarding the proposed rezoning and to answer any questions. Planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing, after which it will need to discuss this matter, then formulate a recommendation for city council.
Hi, Mr. Mulchan.
Good evening. Rob Mulchan, S E C, I'm here tonight on behalf of Greenhouse Ministries to introduce you to their newest facility here in downtown Murphysboro. The site itself, if you can see it in location, is just a few blocks away from the actual square itself, and this facility here we're in tonight, the city hall. The site itself, when we zoom in on the site, is more or less this area, and it's encompassed by the pink and white area. The existing facility that Greenhouse is occupying right now is just over here, just to the, just to the west of the facility on that side over there. So we're more or less moving into a newer, newer set of home for our client. Again, zoned C H on that side, and looking at this as being part of the existing land for the land use plan on that side, and the central business district with the central core overlay district involved as well, so we're meeting all those requirements. A couple of views really quickly of some of the surrounding properties. This is actually on the front side of our property, looking to the north along Academy. So the site is on the right-hand side, and the adjacent property on your left-hand side is the parking lots that Amelia was alluding to earlier. This is a view down, down, yeah, State Street, and you can see on the right-hand side, there's the funeral home, and then there's also an existing home that's sitting there just off the property of ours. This is the dead-end street that's on the northern side of our property. This is Sevier Street, dead ends into the old city cemetery on that side that you see in the background there. This is a couple of pictures of some of the homes and other businesses that are located in and around our site. As I said, there's a funeral, Scales and Sons Funeral Home is just across the street as well. Just kind of give you a little character. This is one of the homes, the vacant homes that's to the north of our property on the other side, is Sevier Street, and this is the other home that's just the north side as well. And then this is a picture of the backside of the current Greenhouse Ministries building over there, and the parking lot associated with the city. Property itself is roughly a little more than one acre. As you can see here, our main building is a two-story mixed-use building. It's roughly, I mean, maximum 26,000 square feet in size, two stories. We talked about this being a very, bringing this into the central core overlay district, making certain that this was very much a very urban type of setting. The building itself is brought up to within five feet of the property line, so we're making a very urban character with this. Associated with this project, we'll be incorporating some streetscaping elements along the front end of the property that side. Looking at putting in sidewalks, parallel parking along the street, and incorporating some onsite lighting along, I mean, sorry, street lighting along the actual street itself to provide a more, more urban feel in regards to the overall development on that side. Moving forward, the property itself, we've got, you know, the, most of the parking we put on the backside of the building, which is very conducive to an urban environment. You can see, as we talked about, there will be an outdoor seating area on the backside over here, and this little quadrant back here, a little outdoor patio area for the tenants that'll be there, working through with Greenhouse Ministries, through their volunteering and helping with our residents that need help. Moving forward, we'll be incorporating a six-foot-tall PVC fence along our entire southern boundary to help more or less provide some more privacy between ourselves and the adjacent properties, one of which, as you can see, is an existing parking lot on that side, and the one home that I described earlier on that side. The, the overall intent of the property was to more or less, you know, provide a new home for Greenhouse, which provides voluntary assistance to those people in need here in the community on that side. The project itself, as we talked about, is two stories. The first floor is more or less the facilities for counseling, food preparation for dining and such like that, clinic, and some other internal uses, offices, and such like that for the ministry on that side. And then the second story is all pretty much a 17-unit dwelling area upstairs, 17 one-bedroom units upstairs, that will be used for the, for those tenants that have been going through the ministries program at that point in time on that side. There'll also be one space upstairs for their onsite manager, that will provide a person that will be onsite 24/7 to help with making certain that the facility is being maintained, and also helping with the level of security. I know that when we were at the planning commission, when you were asked about in regards to the upgrades and what we can do to the site in regards to providing a safe environment, not only for the individuals working at the clinic itself, but also for the surrounding residents on that side. So we will be following most of the SEPTED standards that we worked with the staff, and also the police department in regards to those standards on that side. I've outlined those inside the book, as well as what we'll be following under those SEPTED guidelines on that side, so that we're providing a level, an extra level of safety in regards not only to the facility, but also the residents in and around the community on that side, which would include a very well-done photometric plan in regards to providing a very good amount of lighting for the site, not only in the parking area, but also around the building itself on that side. Architecture of the building, as you can see here, these are a bunch of views, the top view is the view that you would see from Academy Street, which is more or less our front door. The next view down is the backside, which is facing towards the parking lot and the cemetery. And then the side views that you can see that would be facing either towards Sevier Street on the lower left, and then also towards State Street on the lower right. All masonry product on this, we're looking at some kind of split-faced stone along the base to create a good base with the building. Altogether, brick, different color shades and styles to help accentuate the overall building itself, some hardy plank on some of the, in the eaves and such like that in the cornices. And then, you know, very much a very well-stylish building with a very urban look. We've articulated the facade to make it, you know, not look like one long, straight building, more or less creating a bunch of different planes of architectural character, but also changing up the character of those planes so that there was, it looks like it's a montage of different type of structures all tied together on that side. Overall, we talked about two access points. Our main access point would be off of South Academy Street, and then the other access point would be off of the dead end of East Sevier Street that leading towards the cemetery on that side. So those would be our two access points to our parking for access to the site. Appreciate your time and consideration of this, and I'll be available for any questions now or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Mulchan? I'm going to ask one quick question. On page 14, where it talks about our building materials, and it gives the example colors, and then it states, for each of those four items, it says different colors will be allowed. And so, like, how broad is that statement?
I think you can see when the colors that you see in the diagrams on page 15, that's kind of the palette that we're going with on that side, so that, I mean, you know, based on what we see in the book, that's the color spectrum we're looking at in regards to the actual appearance of the structures on that side. Narrowing down the exact color of the brick at this point is one of those things that when we get to the site plan level, we'll narrow it down, but I think the color spectrum's what you see on page 15 is what the palette we're looking for.
That'll be great, as long as it doesn't come in, you know, purple or something.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. So we will open the public hearing for this zoning application, and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak, either for or against this item. Nobody? Okay. We will close the public hearing. And we will ask for any comments or questions from the planning commission.
If there are no questions, I make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very nice building.
It is. And I just want to say thanks to Cliff and Jane, and for all you do for the downtown area and those people that are down there, that this is a phenomenal opportunity for you to not just give a person a fish, but to teach a person to fish. And I know that's kind of the concept of what you're doing there with trying to teach people how to cook, and educate, and provide them with rooms. And I think it's maybe, what, 18 months is the maximum stay? Is that close? So it's not permanent housing for anyone. It's a training period, and I think that's something that is much needed in our city, and I really want to say thank you for providing that service.
Okay. So that is the conclusion of our new business for tonight. The next item is staff reports and other business, and I believe Mr. Blomley has a couple of calendar-related items for us.
I do, yes, ma'am. So in looking at the planning commission calendar, our April night meeting is on April 1st, and that is, in addition to being April Fool's Day, which I don't think there's any prohibition on holding a planning commission meeting on April Fool's Day, but in addition to being on April Fool's Day, it's also during spring break week, and it's something that we did not pick up on when we first drafted the calendar. And in general, we've tried to avoid scheduling public hearing meetings which we have, where we have public hearings, the week of spring break, just because of people's, people who would want to come speak, their calendar conflicts, travel conflicts. So what I would recommend to the planning commission, if it's the wishes of the planning commission, would be to reschedule that April 1st meeting to April the 8th, which would be the week after spring break. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but that would be our recommendation. And if you do agree with that, then we would need a motion to amend the calendar as such.
All right, everybody's checking their calendars. When you've had a chance to do that. We'll look for a motion.
Make a motion we revise the schedule from April 1st to April 8th for the 6 o'clock planning commission meeting.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you all, that's all I have. Yes, ma'am?
I have nothing.
Any other business?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you all, good night.